Okay, are we good to go?
I think we are, yes. Chris is on, so I think we're good to go. You can start us up.
All right, let's get it going. Hi, my name is George Scobie. I'm the Chair of the Auburn School Committee. Allow me to ensure that all expected members and staff are present. Dr. McCrillis?
Yep.
Mrs. Kaufman? Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Holloway?
Yes, I'm here.
Chairperson Harrington?
Yes.
Dr. Brunel?
Yes.
Dr. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mrs. Worz-Bicki?
Yes.
Excellent. Did I miss anyone? All right, great. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Auburn School Committee, as I mentioned earlier. Please understand that this is our first attempt at a remote meeting. Please bear with us. As we try to be transparent and keep all stakeholders informed, this meeting is being streamed live. And as always, you can reach out to us, any of us, with any questions that you may have after the meeting. So with that being said, we'll get started. I will turn it over to Dr. Brunel for new business.
Thank you. So the first item, and again, as you said, Mr. Chair, this is new to us, but certainly we want to keep the public informed. So what has been recommended is that we have, the school committee has a policy BEDH regarding public comment. So it was posted on the agenda that if any member of the community commented or questioned, they were to email that to me by 3:00 PM today. I did not hear from anyone. So it is my recommendation that you vote to temporarily suspend policy BEDH during this period of closure.
I would entertain a motion to suspend. Do I have a motion to suspend?
Megan McCrillis. Motion to temporarily suspend policy BEDH, public comment during the period of closure?
That was Megan McCrillis. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dorothy Kaufman, second.
Thank you. Roll call, vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote. Thank you. And now we move on to new business.
But first, I just want to thank all of you for joining us remotely so we could get some business accomplished. But also want to take some time to recognize that it's, has gone through a couple of different names. We were originally calling it the Grab and Go Program, but now it's really more the Meals to Go Program. It's been offered on, it started on the first Wednesday we were closed and has continued, will happen again tomorrow on Mondays and Wednesdays, where families, it's primarily for our free and reduced lunch families, but others, if they are feeling food insecurity in any way, can join as well. From Auburn Middle School from 11:00 to 12:30 on Mondays, providing breakfast and lunch from Mondays and Tuesdays. And then again on Wednesdays, providing breakfast and lunch for Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. It has been going extremely well, whereas we had probably about 80 children, 80 children who were fed that first Wednesday. Just yesterday, we had 142 families. And we've sent the invitation out in case any additional families, due to the extended closure and some people's jobs and unemployment and such. We've had another, as of noon time today, we had an additional 15 children sign up. So we're going to be serving about 156 children. We did get good news from the USDA. Originally, only communities that had 50% or more free and reduced lunch were eligible for reimbursement. Through the advocacy of the Commissioner of Education, and I would suspect our legislators and the Governor himself as well, the federal, that's a federal program, did remove that requirement. So we will be eligible for reimbursement, which is a good thing. But as you've all agreed from the start when I've updated you, this was certainly the right thing to do for our community and particularly for our children who really rely on our food service program. None of this would be possible without the support of our cafeteria staff led by Ann Fancy as the middle school cafeteria manager, certainly Janice King. Dr. Chamberlain has been instrumental. But want to give recognition to the cafeteria staff, being Ann Fancy, Debbie Falkingren, Michelle Poison, Allison John, Nicoletta Camoli, Denise King, Natalie Klein, Amanda Walensky, and Cora Franzen. And also the many volunteers. We've had community members and many staff from across the schools who are able to come and help on different times. So I want to recognize them as well. Ally DeLuca, Brian Davis, Alicia Lapamato, Laura Lavin, Eileen Torini, April Campbell, Jessie Harrington, Kristen Sandberg, Jane Gaborio, Jen Keller, Melissa Scanlon, Liz Anasoskis, Kathy Anasoskis, Greg Desto, Matt Carlson, Cheryl Moran, Beth Chamberlain, and myself. So it is a really smooth operation. And also want to give kudos to Sally Darkangelo and Megan, her administrative assistant, as the two of them come. After our first day, we got things figured out. They come and pick up and deliver food packages to the children in Pheasant Court and in Pine Brook Court. So a terrific help. Some of our volunteers deliver food right to families who can't get to Auburn Middle School, and the rest come and pick up. But truly, a shining moment in these really challenging times.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks for those kind words. I agree, it's great to bring a sense of normalcy to the kids. I'm sure they're in a place where they're a little bit uncomfortable. So nice of everyone to step up.
Through the chair, this is Dorothy Kaufman. I just have one question regarding any gaps that we might actually have in the funding. Is that program fully reimbursed? Or if families wanted to somehow contribute? Basically, do we have a need for any of those contributions?
So through the chair, I think that's a great question. We actually held a meeting, Mrs. King, Mrs. Worz-Bicki, Dr. Chamberlain and I, yesterday because we're still unclear. So we were just notified yesterday that the USDA 50% rule had been lifted, whether that we were going to be retroactively supported or not. There is also Eric Otis, our Emergency Management Coordinator in Auburn, did share with us that there is the potential to get some reimbursement for food. So we're looking to all of those avenues. But I do think that we may be short. And in fact, we had another family member say to let them know because they would be happy to contribute to that. But we have not, we have not, we don't know yet where we're at funding-wise.
Okay, thank you. So, and then I just have one follow-up question. If we find that we are short, because I have been outraged by several people as well, asking how they can help, not only through even Family Services, but through this Meals to Go Program. Do we need to set up a separate fund? Or could that just go straight into that component of the budget without a separate vote and a separate need for a budget? Basically, do we have a place to receive the funds if people want to donate?
Yes, so I would say to you, Cecilia, I'll let you speak after I share, just to be sure I'm being accurate. The food service program is funded through a revolving account, basically funded by monies taken in for food. And also there's USDA reimbursements that we get. So we have a revolving account already set up. So just like a couple of meetings ago, we had some people who made donations. That was placed into the food service revolving, and Mrs. King applied those credits where needed. But Cecilia, I'll turn it to you if you have anything to add through the chair.
Basically, the food service revolving account is separate on its own, but we did establish within the general fund a revolving account, which is a gift account, which people, if they wanted to make monetary donations, could make donations to the school lunch account. They would just send that to Auburn Public Schools and specify that they wanted those to go to the school lunch account. So it could be a gift, and we would acknowledge that and accept it. And that would be deposited for future use for the school lunch.
Great, thank you. Thank you for saying that.
It could also offset school lunch balances if we end up having more at the end. But if we run short at any point and need extra funding, that would help as well. So if anybody's interested, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Great question. Moving on.
Mr. Chair, do you want to do approval of the minutes? Or do you want me to go on to my report?
Yeah, I'll seek approval of the minutes of March 11, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Megan McCrillis, motion to approve minutes from March 11, 2020, school committee meeting.
Gail Holloway, second.
Thank you. Roll call, vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
I'm staying, I was absent from the meeting.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Scobie, yes. It is a vote. Thank you. And now we move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just would like your votes and support. So we had made a decision early on with this, similar to districts across the Commonwealth, to continue to pay those wages and salaries that are supported by the operating budget. So I would ask for your vote of support of that taking place. I will say to you that all staff are expected and are doing work from home. We're following all of the social distancing in CDC and Mass Department of Public Health requirements. But we are trying to keep things as normal in our new normal as possible, but would seek your support of that.
I would entertain that motion.
I, Gail Holloway, make the motion to continue to pay all salaries supported by the operating budget.
Do I have a second?
Megan McCrillis, second.
Roll call, vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote.
And then the next item, I shared with you a memo regarding transportation costs. So obviously, all of this is new to us as well, this extended closure. So I shared with you a memo that Mrs. Worz-Bicki forwarded to me looking for the school committee's support to authorize her to work with the business managers of neighboring districts who likewise contract with AA Transportation. So there's been an awful lot of guidance that has been sought around this issue for a couple of weeks. But Mrs. Worz-Bicki was recently in a meeting yesterday with Jay Sullivan, who is one of the finance heads at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And it's his recommendation that communities that share vendors work together with the vendor to determine a percentage of the payment of the contract that would be made. So I would ask you to authorize Mrs. Worz-Bicki to serve as our representative and to do that with her colleagues.
I would entertain that motion.
I, Gail Holloway, will make the motion to authorize Auburn's business manager to work collaboratively with AA Transportation and business managers from area districts that likewise have a contract with AA Transportation to negotiate agreed-upon percentage of the original contract amount to be paid during the school closure due to COVID-19.
Do I have a second?
Megan McCrillis, second.
Roll call, vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote.
Thank you very much.
The next item, and this is item that there really has not been. So the hourly employees who are part of our operating budget, you have already voted in support of those. That, which is a bit trickier, is hourly wages from, specifically from the satellite, galaxy, and asteroids programs. We have notified families at their request, at their question, that we would be giving them a credit toward any payments that they would have submitted for the before-after-school program for future months. A couple have asked for reimbursements for the month of April, and we'll certainly be working to do that. The challenge is those accounts are funded solely by tuition that is coming in. So I seek your, and I don't have a recommendation for you at this time because there hasn't been, from my perspective, clear guidance on this. I know some districts are not doing so because they don't have funding to do so. But open it up for your discussion. And Dr. Chamberlain or Mrs. Worz-Bicki, if I anyway misrepresented, if you would feel free to add your opinion, it would be welcome through the chair.
I would entertain that motion, and maybe we have a discussion during the second, if that's okay with the committee. I would entertain the motion.
I, Dorothy Kaufman, make a motion to approve the payment of our hourly wage workers for our after-school program.
Do I have a second?
I, Gail Holloway, second now.
Thank you. Discussion?
Through the chair, this is Dorothy Kaufman. I guess I just really need to know what the number is. So what does that look like financially? Can we swing it? Do we have any cushion in our current budget to do so? Personally, I feel like as an act of good faith, I think it's, I don't know, I feel like it's the right thing to do. But it depends on whether or not we can actually absorb it, given everything else, all the other uncertainty in this situation.
So through the chair, I will say our satellite and galaxy programs have healthy balances in them that could likely support. Our asteroids program does not, it just is not as well-attended and hasn't been in effect, quite honestly, anywhere near as long. One of the other considerations, just to share for your thinking, is what I have seen some districts do is for those individuals who it is their, was their primary source of income, they are continuing it. But for perhaps, you know, people where it was a second job or even students who go down and participate in the program, they weren't. I'm not sure how you differentiate those, quite honestly. But with your permission, Mr. Chair, I'd like to just hear from Dr. Chamberlain and Mrs. Worz-Bicki to hear what their understanding is on those.
That would be great.
Well, from the meetings that I've been in, I think this is an area that, while we have many gray areas right now, is particularly so. Mainly because, you know, it is a solely-based revolving account program and one that is, you know, used by a certain subset of students and all of that. So I don't know if Mrs. Worz-Bicki has further information from her business manager end of things, but this is one that remains a big question for lots of districts. And as you've seen, or we've seen, every day we get new guidance from the Department of Education related to a variety of issues. And I guess my wondering is, in the next, in the next week, next day, we could get further guidance from them as to how they see as the best way to handle these things. But right now, it is a little bit of an uncertain situation, I think, if that makes any sense.
Agreed.
And then through the chair, well, then I guess my other question is, how many paychecks are these workers behind? Because while this might have initially just been someone's second source of income, given how many people are out of work right now, this might be their only source of income now. So how many paychecks are we looking at? Maybe, actually, maybe even the better question is how many employees total? And then let's break that down into how many paychecks that would equate to. Because, you know, that might just, it might just come down to somebody being able to feed their families right now. So let me take a deeper dive into the numbers.
They did speak, they did get, received their last paycheck, which were behind the two weeks. So they did receive a paycheck already. So this next paycheck up and coming would be what we're looking for guidance to move forward. So they have been paid for all the services that they have provided. But I agree also with Dr. Chamberlain and Dr. Brunel. We have had a lot of this no-consistency. I have business manager associates that they're saying they can't do it, they don't have the funds to do it, and they're not going to do it. Others are saying they're going to pay everyone. So there isn't, and we don't have any direct, specific guidance on this type of situation. And it is, like, you know, like we said, it's, it depends upon what you have in those funds too. And I mean, right now, we're in a good situation with our funding. But depending upon if it were to go on for a longer period of time, then it becomes problematic, and especially with the asteroid situation where we don't really have the funding to support that program at this point. I'll turn it back to...
But through the chair, how many actual employees do we have in there?
So through the chair, I can share with you that there are probably, I would say 50 over the course of the programs, the before-and-after-school programs, where our asteroids program has two employees for after-school only. The after-school program at Swanson, I'm going to say probably has 15 employees. In Bryn Mawr and Path to Jog, probably both have eight or 10 each, somewhere in that vicinity. The afternoon, and then there's morning pieces as well.
Right, and some don't work every day. Some work, you know, some might work Monday, Wednesday, Friday. There's a variation in schedules, except typically for the lead teacher, who tends to work every day, whether that be morning or afternoon, in most cases.
Through the chair, if we can fund it, and I know, I think we really need to look at the numbers, I would strongly want to fund it. I also don't want to lose these staff. You know, next year, I know that we have some wonderful employees that work in our after-school programs. And if they're not getting paid and they go somewhere else, you know, we lose really, really good staff that our kids really appreciate, and so do many parents. So if we could fund it, I would want to. If it's fundable, if, you know, if we can't do it in the budget, I mean, I guess we wouldn't be able to. But I would hope we could.
Through the chair, perhaps what I could suggest is to get that data pulled together for you and present it to you in writing. And then perhaps we could pull back together after you review it. I do have some of the data. The uncertainty around this is, what I could say to you with confidence is that if this closure is until May 4 only, I would feel comfortable that we would be able to find funding to support it. That's what we know currently. But should that be extended, and I don't have information now that tells me it's going to, but should it be, we could be in a situation that funding would certainly have run out long before May 4 in one of the programs, but get tight in the other ones. But I think we could do it in galaxy and satellite, I believe.
Then through the chair, would it be possible to only vote through May 4 for now until we can get additional guidance? I specifically am just trying to avoid holding up the next paycheck because so many people now just learned today that they now cannot go back to, cannot go back to some of the nonessential businesses until May 4. This might have been, that might have been their second job. So could we change the motion? I mean, with the agreement of the committee, of course.
I would be, I would be in agreement with that.
I would be in agreement with that too. I like that idea.
I would.
It seems like, it seems like we're all in agreement. Do we need to amend that motion to say just that?
I would recommend so. And it was Mrs. Kaufman who made the motion, then Mrs. Holloway who seconded. So you'd need to amend your motion, and then amend your second.
Mrs. Kaufman?
I amend the motion to pay through May 4.
And I second that motion that we pay through May 4.
Roll call, vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie, yes. And we'll address that again in a few weeks, I guess.
Great, thank you. The next item, which is the final day of school in April vacation, I'm actually going to ask that you table that. Having just received some information earlier today, we have weekly, if not multiple times a week, conference calls with the Commissioner. And in a notification that came out today, there may be some additional guidance around April vacation that may impact the final day of school. What I can tell you is the Commissioner has been consistent right from the start that school districts need to get to their 100, their originally planned 185th day of school and do not need to go any longer. However, school committees set the calendar and could certainly vote to extend it if you wanted to. But right now, as originally voted by you, the final day of school was June 19, the original 185th day. So where that is not for a bit, I'd ask that we just table this, and we will add this to an upcoming meeting agenda. If agreed.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, agreed.
Great, everybody. The next piece is the Student Opportunity Act. So originally, those plans, and we need to submit what's called the short-form plan because our monies were not high enough to require the long form. Originally, it needed to be submitted by April 1. I know it has gone before the legislature to get that extended. We have not heard officially about that, except to say that it is going to be extended. I don't know how the date until when. So we will update you. Dr. Chamberlain, Mr. Handfield, and I will be working on that document. We will need your vote of approval, but we'll make sure to bring it before you once it's completed and once we know the date when it's due.
Sounds good.
The next item is the Southern Wester County Collaborative. It's the second quarter report of this school year, which actually ended December 31. So I do need a motion to accept. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I would entertain that motion.
Megan McCrillis, I make a motion to accept the SDV CEC's second quarter report for the period of October to December 2019.
Gail Holloway, second.
Do I have a second? Roll call, vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote. And we now move on to unfinished business.
So in ongoing discussions with Superintendent-elect Handfield and Dr. Chamberlain, I wanted to make you aware that we were recently notified of two individuals who we had originally put in the budget for next year. One, a high school teacher who will extend her maternity leave for an additional year, and another teacher who is requesting to take next year off and to return the following year due to the savings that will be realized because we will hire people as a long-term sub at BA Step 1. We have made additional reductions to the budget, therefore bringing it in line with what the town had requested, which is a 2.75% increase for a total budget of $27,676,055. And it is my recommendation that you approve that new amount.
I would entertain that motion.
I, Gail Holloway... Go ahead. All right. I, Gail Holloway, will make the motion to adjust the fiscal year 2021 draft budget to $27,276,055, which represents a 2.75% increase. This in keeping with the town's requested budget amount.
Do I have a second?
Dorothy Kaufman, a second.
Any discussion on that?
Through the chair, before discussion happens, I just want to clarify. I may have misheard, Mrs. Holloway. It should be $27,676,055. I don't know if that's what you had read. I just want to make sure it's in the record is that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Was there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote. Moving on. Dr. Brunel?
Thank you. I just lost you there for a minute, so thank you. Just wanted to make you aware that I will be presenting the FY '21 budget to the Finance Committee tomorrow night. That will be done remotely. And I don't have an exact time yet, but we'll keep you updated on that. With regard to the 2021 public hearing and town meeting, I will tell you that we're in ongoing discussions and meetings with the town's administration and the department heads, and they do not as yet have a recommendation on this. heads, and they do not as yet have a recommendation on this, so I will keep you apprised, because the issue with public hearings is you need to make sure that the public has the ability to interact and ask questions. So that is still in limbo, but suffice to say, it will not happen on April 8th as originally planned. The next item, the location of central office. So I think we included in your packet information, no, I actually don't see it there. We will get for you the information regarding utility costs from Auburn Police Station as well as CIP monies and such. And I have spoken with CFO Kazanovich regarding this and shared my feelings. So since I will be retiring in June, and this potential transfer to the police station would not occur for likely a couple of years, I really think it's one of those things that we, you need to get the input of Superintendent-elect Handfield, Dr. Chamberlain, and perhaps others, Mr. Fahy and such as well. So with your approval, what I will do is we will forward to you for our next meeting all of those costs for you to take a look at and see for comparison purposes, and then we'll add it to the next agenda. And depending on, you know, I could certainly check back with CFO Kazanovich and Town Manager Jacobson, if there is a date specific, I will tell you, I think they were hoping to move, have that information to share with the public. But I would also say to you, having spoken with you just this morning, we are 24/7 on coronavirus and all of this, and this, the closures and things. So my guess is that may have, has had to take a bit of a backseat, but I will get that information to you, we'll add it to the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And then the next item is for you to vote to, and sign the three-year contract effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023, for Mr. Casey Handfield, who will soon be Dr. Casey Handfield, to be superintendent.
I would entertain that motion.
Igle Holloway will make the motion to approve and sign the three-year contract effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023, for Mr. Casey Handfield.
Do I have a second?
Second, that, Megan McCrillis.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes, it is a vote. And we now move on to...
What a year to start off. You know?
Things improve, its timing's going to be impeccable. September could be, could be clear.
Let's hope.
So moving on to new business.
So we've put together, really in keeping with the model that we've had over the past many years, draft calendar dates for school committee meetings. And the reason we bring this vote is, with these dates established, we will then put together the planned, the Google sheet that lists all other events for next school year, really trying to avoid conflicts whenever possible. So after this, it goes to our music and fine arts department, and then to principals from there. So it is my recommendation, approve.
That's true.
Well, thank you.
I would entertain that motion.
Dorothy Kaufman, make the motion to approve the schedule for 2020, 2021 for school committee meetings as presented?
Igle Holloway seconds.
Roll call vote, Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes, it is a vote.
With regard to upcoming events, due to the current uncertainty, we won't be listing these, but I will tell you, as I think I shared in an email last weekend with you, the updates that we get from the state and others really happen on truly an hour-by-hour basis. So I just want to give huge kudos to the leadership team and all members of the APS team, certainly to include yourselves for doing this meeting tonight. It really is, it is just so much that is unknown, but as I've said in my communications to families, we're going to continue to do everything we can to support our students. We have a truly amazing district, and that's supported by an incredible community. So we will continue to get through this together, and I must make a plug for people to do social distancing, which I really think should be termed physical distancing. I think we can keep our social relationships together, we have to do it in different ways, through Zoom meetings, or FaceTime, or however. But if we're really going to tackle this problem and bring it to an end sooner than later, I think we all really need to commit to keeping in our homes and looking at it as an opportunity. It may not be always fun, but as an opportunity to reconnect with our families and our loved ones, and to hopefully help save some people from contracting this disease.
Thank you. Related to that, Dr. Brunel, I've heard of some people using our facilities for basketball or other activities recently. Is that something that we're condoning, or should we be thinking about locking up those gates?
So I will say to you, in a communication just yesterday... Are you talking about outside facilities, Mr. Scobie?
Yeah, like our basketball courts at the high school, or...
Yes, my apologies. So just yesterday, we were notified, and in fact, we're having the same signs made that the town had had made in placing them on the remaining playgrounds. They were working yesterday and today to take down the nets, to lock the gates, and to restrict access to all of those, even the tennis nets and such, really to try and emphasize strongly that this should not be a time when people are out in playing. There will be time for that in the future.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, I'm pleased to hear that because it has been quite full, and I've gotten lots of communication about it, so I'm pleased to hear that we're in line with what the town has been doing.
Yep, that's great. Okay, we now move on to teaching and learning. Beth Chamberlain?
Hello, everyone. If this was only all we could talk about right now is teaching and learning, right? But it's actually, I enjoy these chats to kind of see and hear from everyone, because as Dr. Brunel said, right, we still need to stay socially connected, just not physically. So I'm pleased to be here tonight to talk to you about this. So as many of you may already know, we have received numerous communications from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as to how we should move forward in this new environment that we are currently presented with. And with the guidance of Commissioner O'Reilly, he last week on March 26th provided us with a set of guidelines and an outline for what he terms as remote learning, and encouraging districts to take on a remote learning model, recognizing that many of us are not fully equipped to provide a robust online learning experience that you might encounter at the collegiate level, where they have built platforms designed specifically to teach online. But this remote learning option also provides students and families with an option to continue learning, and so we appreciated the guidance that he provided. One of the main components of what he provided to us was focusing on the holistic needs of our entire educational community, so making sure that our staff are connecting. I will tell you, every day I look forward to our leadership team meetings, to see my colleagues who I interact with on a daily basis, and now don't have that opportunity. And so that's part of what we're trying to build for our families and our students, that they can continue to have that relationship with their teacher, and to have that live connection with someone for maybe a very short time during the course of a week, yet along with that to provide learning opportunities that can happen in their homes. So that's something that's in the process of being worked on at each school and is very close to completion in most cases. And via that, this remote learning model, what does that look like? So at the heart of that are the relationships, but also it's a structure so that we provide students with somewhat of a schedule, an idea of how long things should take for them, and in that schedule, trying to account for about half of a regular school day, approximately three hours of learning time. That's remote learning time. That doesn't mean that they're on the computer with their teacher for three hours, but that they have activities that are clear, that they have the materials they need to guide their learning for three hours during the course of the school day. And obviously, that will require support from our families as well, certainly for our youngest learners. And so, you know, the Department of Education, you know, talks about large group video or conference calls, email projects, reading lists, online learning platforms, which I will tell you, Auburn, I think, is well-positioned in that way with all of the technology that you, the committee and the community have supported over the last number of years, where we now, you know, we used a lot of technology already to support our students' learning, and now most, really all platforms are open, free, and accessible to our students. So we've been able to add that in quite seamlessly. So it's going to be, it's going to look different in each school, it's going to look different from grade level to grade level, but we are trying to provide a range of activities for students to engage with remotely each and every day. And we've committed to, you know, that they have some kind of a connection with an educator or multiple educators over the course of a week, that might be in a live setting, a hangout, a Google hangout, or for a short period of time, or it might be via email or a chat, whatever. There are a variety of ways that that can happen, but we want to make sure that we're connecting with our kids, and that they have activities, again, to cover about half of a regular school day, that we make regular recommendations for them to follow for physical activity. We saw a very interesting one about bottle flipping that I have put down a challenge for the leadership team to see if we can, if we can match that. I think it's, I don't think we're going to be nearly as good as the video I sent.
I think I might have a good coach here for that.
I think you might, I think you might. That was quite remarkable, but...
The Scobie family is not allowed.
It didn't, it didn't sound great while I was trying to do some of my own coursework.
We want to make sure that we don't forget about the arts and enrichment activities and ways kids can, you know, enrich their day with different types of, whether they be art or music activities, that they may not have participated in previously, and to whatever extent possible, that teachers provide feedback to students on the assignments that are given, so that students know that their teachers are looking at their work, that they're appreciating the work that they're doing. And so all of this is, we are in a, we're in a very good place right now. Schools are working out the particulars of what they want to have their students doing, but I do know there's been a tremendous amount of support from our staff, a tremendous amount of collaboration with grade levels, and guidance counselors working together, and just across the board, our secretaries working from home with certain things so that they get ahead of things in the office. So a big shout out to our staff for how they have stepped up to this new environment, for sure. We have work to do, but everyone is up and ready for the challenge that this adventure has presented to us. So I think we are well-positioned to provide our stu, and we've already been providing our students with learning opportunities, don't get me wrong. That's been going on for a couple of weeks already. We're going to formalize it a little bit, we're going to ramp it up a little bit, and I think we all have a lot to be proud of. I certainly am, and I appreciate all the hard work of the principals and the teachers because this is, it's a tremendous testament to their dedication to our students, for sure.
Excellent. Yeah, and thanks to, thanks to all of you. It's fantastic. I never question the dedication of our staff, but in times like this is when they can really shine.
Exactly, I agree.
I agree. I can say, only in my own household, just the personal contact with the classroom as a whole has been a really positive experience. And at least for the band's kids in the middle school, they actually created their own check-ins that they do every day, even in absence of Mr. Myers, which I think really speaks highly of how close these kids are, and know that they're their own little family, and I think it's really great. You know, sometimes it's just a check-in to say, "Goodnight, everybody," but, you know, it speaks to the kind of community that we, that we're, not we, but that our educators have created for them, which I think is fantastic.
Wonderful.
I agree, that's why we do what we do.
Through the chair, a couple things. I know you mentioned live, I know, are they going to start doing maybe like little live meetings at the elementary school level with the kids who are able to participate at all, like Zoom or whatever?
They are, and it will probably, our primary platform for communication is going to be through Google, so it would be a Google Meet or a Google Hangout.
Okay.
And they are working out those logistics now. And actually, I think at all levels, it might not be every day, right, even at the elementary level, but we are going to set up some regular schedules for that, so that it is live, even though I know teachers have done, you know, videos of them reading books and all of that, but just to have some time during the week where there can be a little bit of back and forth. So yes, definitely, that's in process.
I have to say, my son's teacher did a few like circle times, I think she called it, at the first grade level, and just to see my son's face light up, being able to actually see her, and it was just a video, but was just amazing. And I also think it's important that we appreciate what some of these parents are going through now, teaching their kids at home. I know I'm working full-time and I'm teaching a pre-K, a one first grader and a second grader, and...
Probably.
And sometimes that can be, at the lower levels, I haven't gotten to the higher levels yet, but it can be challenging because they all need me at the same time. So I think it's important that we appreciate what some of these parents are going through who are still full-time working. I know a lot of my colleagues are in the hospitals right now, working and teaching, so...
And you bring up a really good point. So when we, when the schools communicate, they are setting things up in a scheduled sense for a few hours each day, right? So it might say 8:30 to 9:00, or 9:00 to 9:30. But that's more for families who want that kind of like, okay, boys and girls, no, it's 9 o'clock, we're going to do this now. If there's another family who needs to do it at 4:45, that's going to be okay, too.
Right.
But we just want to provide some guidance around how long we think students should be working on some of those things, and to also provide, when they do do those live check-ins, specific times for that, and regular kind of times for that. So again, that's all being worked through, but I could not agree with you more. This is a tremendous lift for a lot of families to kind of keep all of those balls in the air, for sure. And so I will tell you, we've had a lot of positive feedback from families on teachers who are, you know, being very clear, concise, prepared, they have the materials together, everything comes in one shot, they know where to find everything. So we're trying to be cognizant of not inundating families with too many emails from different teachers, we're trying to coordinate that to the greatest degree we can, so that things kind of stay in one place, and families aren't like, oh my God, I just got six emails from six different teachers, you know?
It has been wonderful. And what about when they go back? Does he come out with anything about testing when they come back, about MCAS, and even next year's MCAS if our students are missing this much time? Any recommendations at this point from them?
Through the chair, that is something from the commissioner, that he has gone before the legislature. So there are federal requirements for testing and also state ones. So I believe it was Governor Baker who put forward legislation just late last week, seeking to give the commissioner latitude in making such decisions. But as of yet, no official notification has come out, but we do expect to hear something, hopefully within the next week or so.
Okay, great.
Great questions. Is that all we have under teaching and learning?
That is it for today.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we now move on to even under adverse conditions, everyone's favorite time of the evening. Business and financial.
Failure.
Failure.
Good evening, everyone. I have a hard act to follow. Beth did a wonderful job, presenting your remote learning plans. I've been watching the leadership team interact on our Google meets every day, and they're so energetic and positive, and our staff at central office has been super, too, as well. You know, Liz Lynch has been coming in to work on payroll. Cheryl Warren's been coming in to do the accounts payable. Warren's and some of, even helping to give out some of the iPads and different things. And all the office staff have been pitching in, coming in and filling in, you know, helping out where they can or working from home or remotely. So it's been really nice. So for my business, my business report, I have a year-to-date budget report that's dated 3/26/2020. That was in your packet. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Are there any questions? Seeing none.
Then I'll move on to transfers. I have a list of transfers also included in the packet. Most of them are in the same series. There is one transfer that's between series. But I'm just looking for your approval for that, and that would be great.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to-
Dorothy Kaufman, make the motion to approve the transfers between series as presented by our business manager.
Gil-
Do I have a second?
Seconds.
Okay.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Holloway?
Yes.
Ms. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote.
Okay, well, thank you. I promised to keep it very short, so that's what I remember.
That was very short. I want to apologize to those who are watching at home. It's not the usual fun.
We know it's George's favorite.
Absolutely. And is that all we have outside of executive session?
We do have one policy, JC Attendance Areas on second reading that you had approved on first reading at our last meeting.
That's right. And I would entertain that motion.
Jesse Harrington, I'll make the motion to approve policy JC Attendance Areas on second reading.
Do I have a second?
Gil Holloway, second.
Any discussion? Okay. Roll call vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Holloway?
Yes.
Ms. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote. And we do need an executive session, so after we decide to, after we vote and moving into executive session, we will go and open up another invitation for Zoom to take part in that executive session. So at this time, I would entertain that motion for executive session.
I, Gil Holloway, will make a motion that we go into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21A2, to conduct strategies for negotiations with union and non-union personnel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Holloway?
Yes.
Ms. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote. Good night, everyone.